Begin this effort to acknowledge what has been buried by honoring the truth. We stand on the ancestral lands of the Nakachting and the Piscataway people. We pay respect to their elders, past and present. Please take a moment to consider the many legacies of violence, displacement, migration, and settlement that bring us together here today. And please join us in uncovering such truths at any and all public events and to use such truths to guide the legacy of this Arts Commission. Is there any objection to the agenda those previously circulated? Here no objection, the agenda stands as adopted. Good evening and welcome to everyone. We have a fair amount of business to accomplish this evening, including a couple of votes that will be taken following all the committee reports. We have a number of, well, I'm sorry, we have no presenter this month, and it's troubling me now, this is the second month we've not had a presenter, so I don't know if our grantees don't want to be seen by us or not. I think we should double down on that to make sure we get our presenters in. Moving on to the public comment portion, we have a number of individuals signed up for our public comment this evening. The commission welcomes your comments, they are very important to us. Please note the comments are limited to three minutes. Please address your remarks to the chair. Note that we will not be engaging in a dialogue at this time. The purpose of this agenda item is for you, the public, to inform us, the commission, about your views. Members of the public have factual questions, staff would be glad to follow up via email. When I call your name, you may begin your comments. A.J. Mezepi, hi, apologies if I butchered your name, is A.J. here? I see Janice has joined, welcome, Janice. A.J. You're muted.
I'm sorry, I apologize.
No problem, welcome.
Peace and greetings unto the members of the D.C. Commission. My name is A.J. Mezepa, also known as Jet Black, and my company is Shavon Studios. It's also a community stakeholder with the D.C. Commission on the Arts and Humanities. First, I would like to extend my gratitude to you all for letting me express my thoughts and my concerns on the matter at hand. Well, about six months ago or so, it was brought to my attention from my brother and business partner, Garvey, AKA Marcus, Marcus Wells of Grind Season, Inc., that there were opportunities within your organization that could potentially help the citizens that reside in Washington, D.C. through the music and arts. So upon a few dialogues with my brother Garvey, he introduced me to Ms. Andia Evans, who later reached out to myself and updated me on several grant opportunities within your organization. Now, myself being an artist with the Go-Go song entitled Mandingo that's been in the radio stations nationwide for over 29 years and still played to this day, I was definitely interested. So we, the Go-Go pioneers, were approached with the D.C. Music Census, and I found it interesting that under that time, under Mayor Gray's watch in the office, that there were only 900 or so registered musicians within the music census of the D.C. region. So a little short time later, the director, Mr. Aaron Myers, and a few others had met with and sat down with all of the Go-Go pioneers at the roundtable for the first ever meeting with the Go-Go community. And to be honest, it felt like I was being sold a used car. Meaning, there were a lot of promises being made to us as a whole about funding a local studio where we could record on a low rate, a Go-Go tour, grant workshops, et cetera. I even attended a few workshops as a stakeholder and even a stakeholders' meeting, only to learn from Chris Newman, the event coordinator, who attended one of our band's rehearsals after I sent the email addressing my concerns about the census, to learn that from Chris himself, that a local underground producer received funds for an event. And the event was stopped by the D.C. police before the event could even get off the ground. Now, Mr. Myers, who was late coming to the meeting from another meeting, didn't really get to interact with us at the roundtable, but had some very good words to say. The main ones that caught my attentions was his concerns that artists felt like they had to leave out of the city, and these opportunities would help the musicians want to stay in the city and continue to build. So the Go-Go music was one that was added under a different name. He also stated that it was under the Grammys, up for the Grammys, and we should be able to represent our city with Go-Go music in Washington, D.C., which was the official music of D.C. So why is the director and the coordinator more concerned with jazz and hip-hop when Go-Go gets the participants and also helps obtain 2,700 participants in this year's music census? Without our help, reaching and spreading the word with the numbers really been that high? And why hasn't the music census been released to the public as of yet? Now, my gripe is that Garvey was the initial person to bring this hip-hop producer to the directors and to this hip-hop producer, to the directors and the colleagues, only for him to be led astray. Members of the commission, if the director or the event coordinator would have continued to dialogue with Garvey, then we could have helped structure to the point that the D.C. police would have interfered due to his knowledge and respect amongst all the hip-hop and Go-Go scene. He also, he also managed to get Big G of the Backyard Man to do a video promo for the commissions for the D.C. Music Census. Now, knowing G personally for over 30 years, I doubt he would have participated in it all, especially if he knew there would have been false promises made by the resources for the purposes that we didn't get to include for our Go-Go family. We come to, we came on the sandbox together, and we never were apart for these opportunities that were brought to us by Andia Evans, who blessed us away to feed our families and broaden our minds. I thank you for your time, God bless you all.
Thank you for your comments, and I think we'd like to follow up on that, so I'd like to organize a session that I could attend as well with our staff and our side and you and your representatives, see if we can get to the bottom of this, and if there's something that needs to be addressed, we want to address it, definitely.
Yes, sir, thank you, thank you.
Marcus Wells? Wells, you can speak, you're on mute for now. We're back on mute, you were off for a minute.
Can y'all hear me?
Now we can, thank you.
Y'all can hear me now?
Thank you. Now we see you as well, so please.
I thought my camera was messed up. I apologize. I just want to introduce myself, my name is Jiraj Strigavi, I'm a hip-hop artist slash Go-Go artist with over 350 songs available on streaming services, which I've accumulated over 8.5 million streams. I have a clover line, grind season gear, I have a band, Determined to Crank, I have a radio show, Grind Season Radio. Also, I am the manager for Hugs Not Slugs, which was founded by Anwan Big G Glover, which we go to all the high schools in the area teaching kids about financial literacy, how to avoid violence, and the importance of education, et cetera. I was brought into the arts building by Andia Evans, who I would consider a very dear friend of me. From day one, Andia showed us how serious and dedicated she was about the arts building. That's the main reason I dove ahead first, because I saw the vision. After a few meetings, I started to have hope for the future of Washington, D.C. when it comes to financial support system back in Go-Go and hip-hop, which goes hand to hand in Washington, D.C. To show how serious I was about everything, I immediately contacted Anwan Big G Glover, who was the lead talker for the number one band in our area. I convinced him on the seriousness of our music census and how important it is to our community. And I asked him whether he'd support me in helping the arts building get the word out in which he obliged, and he instantly started promoting the music census along with other members from his band. Also, I brought in a hip-hop artist, Chicho, to the fold, artists I've been working with, kind of doing little management duties for. And for some reason, it seems like now, man, him ain't even on the same page, I don't know why. Or he says, because my goal was to bring him there, to get him help, because I always felt that's all he needed was financial support. After that, situation with Chicho kind of fall, I fell back a little bit, and then I see Big G having an issue too, so it made me feel like, oh, no, am I being sold a dream, or is the resources only for certain people? I'm starting, and I'm starting to think I don't fit the criteria along with other people from D.C. Has always been known as a crab in a burrowed city, where nobody supports nobody, everybody for themselves. But my goal as an artist is to be someone who changes that narrative, and I won't stop until my goals come to fruition. Hopefully, in the near future, we can come more proactive with the things we talk about, so it doesn't come off as just talk. And I'm not here to bash anyone, I'm just here merely as a for equality, and I hope that I'm not as it for a lot, thank you.
Someone to share my comments about, I'm going to say Mr. A.J. so that I don't murder his last name. I would like very much to meet with you all and our staff to see if we can get through the issues and get to the right place, but thank you for letting us know.
Yes.
Jaclyn Weber?
Good evening, can you hear me okay? Okay, I'm having some issues with my headset, so I hope you can hear me just fine, good evening.
Lost you. We're trying to sort it out, Ms. Weber. Okay, we're going to come back to Ms. Weber once we solve our technology problem. Ivan Hall?
Am I audible?
Yes, you are, thank you.
Okay, how y'all doing today?
Good, good, thank you.
All right, my name is Ivan Hall.
Can you hear me? Uh-oh, can you hear me okay?
We can hear you now.
Okay, I'm so sorry, yeah, I'm having some difficulties here with my headset, but again, I'm just, I'm just here.
Mr. Hall, we're going to, we're going to, I'll hear from Ms. Weber, we'll get back to you, Mr. Hall.
I'm sorry, Mr. Hall, I'm having trouble and I'm screwing up things. But again, I'm just, I'm pretty much from a family of music lovers. I have a brother, I mean, our family, we have deep roots in music. I have a brother who played with the Delphonics, Skippin' Honie and the Casuals, the Spinners, he toured with Gene Karn, and, you know, many other noted acts, but today, I'm just here to discuss, to just tell you my thoughts about the legacy of this great music called Go-Go.
Lost you again. We don't know if you can hear us, but we cannot hear you. I'm afraid we need to go to Mr. Hall again, Mr. Hall, are you available?
Yeah, I'm here.
Great, sorry about that, we'll try it again.
Not so good, um. Okay, y'all can hear me, right?
Yes, we can hear you fine.
Okay, yeah, so like I said, my name is Ivan Hall, I'm a graphic designer, musician, video editor, multi-level artist. You know, I just want to say that being a self, I'm a self-taught artist, so sometimes, man, self-taught, you know, it feels like there aren't many outlets for your skill sets, and so sometimes I just usually follow my heart, you know, even if that sometimes means doing things just for the love, out of love. And as I matured, I found like a common theme amongst many artists that I know that they lose a lot of the love due to like the lack of outlets, lack of fans, lack of income, you know, just lack of opportunities. And, you know, although some of my peers don't understand how someone like myself could sometimes, you know, move out of passion, so having an arts program and the assistance that comes along with being a part of that program, for me, it really helps balance things out, and it shows that sometimes moving out of love and passion, you know, it can still bring opportunities. I spent and enjoyed in my life learning the arts, putting my personal time into, you know, put my whole soul into it for real. At a young age, I had to become a full-time parent of my children, and, you know, making that decision, I really couldn't give my all to the arts, but I still found time for it. So again, having something like the arts program, it just helps with someone like myself tremendously, and I'm very thankful and appreciative. Yeah, just wanted to share my, you know, part of my story and show some love. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much, and we are here for artists like you, that's why we exist. So thank you for letting us know that and make sure that we continue to do what we need to do to support artists like yourself. Gloria Hightower? Ron Moden? We see you, unmute yourself, Ron.
Can you hear me?
Now we can, thank you.
Thanks for having me and for letting the community have a voice on this wonderful, wonderful creative economy and arts environment we have in Washington, D.C. Historically, there have been, there have always been two ways to get funding in the arts world, through the front door and through the back door. Decisions are normally being made before we even show up, and when we come through the front door, creative artists and Go-Go artists normally get the leftover crumbs, and that's what we are fighting against, or what we were fighting against tiresly years ago, when it made national headlines of the inequities that were established at this arts commission for decades. Unfortunately, when we finally had a sense of hope, the powers that be changed the rules in a full quarter, and they give $11 million to places like the National Theater. Out of the $40 million, only $1 million go to artists and creators east of the river. We must not get confused, that's just, that just giving a few crumbs, a few coins for Go-Go shows is a form, as a form of tokenism, is going to save Go-Go and other artists and ensure that the next generation re-embraces what was stripped away from us, what was stripped away from them, and criminalize, eliminating our music in the schools and the culture that we once had in the 70s, 80s, 90s, and early 2000s. However, we have some good news, the Go-Go Museum will have its ribbon cut on November 18th, and we invite you to see what we have done with $2.5 million, including a difficult infrastructure build-out at a historic site, which a stellar museum building company by the name of Gallagher and Associates, discovery sale will cost over $8 million. So we did with $2 million what they said $8 million. We're still making our city proud with 16 exhibits, this is what creative people do, we find a way to make it happen. Many interacted with holograms, concert stages, a pocket stage and studio on a lower level to observe and teach our youth and the world about our music, culture, and history. This is a living museum, and we are making room for the future. It's a state of emergency, though, in archiving and protecting our history, because as you all know, around the country, it's being aggressively erased and criminalized once again. And I'll close by saying this, on the Don't Mute D.C. website, by the end of the week, our board member, Dr. Suzanne Goodylea, has once again done a study and analysis on the funding from the Arts Commission. And I will say this in advance, it's not looking good. It's not looking good, and I'll leave it at that, you all have a blessed day.
As I said to the others, I would like very much to sit with you and your colleagues to really understand what's going on and what needs to be fixed, and we will address it, I promise you that, you know me.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Weber, we'll try a third time, three times hopefully is the charm, but you're on mute for now. Now you're unmuted, thank you.
This is absolutely awful, and I apologize to you all again.
I think we lost you again. I would ask if you could send me your comments, send them here to the Arts Commission to my attention. We'll make sure that we consume them in the right sort of way, because technology is not being kind today, so my apologies for that. I'm going to go on to the executive director report, Aaron.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Aaron Myers, executive director for the D.C. Commission on Arts and Humanities. I'm an African-American man wearing a multicolored shirt in this moment. So with our staff updates, we are preparing to fill three positions, an inclusion, diversity, equity, accessibility lead, a grant department managers, and resource allocation department members. We are hoping to onboard the new staffers in December. We're going to go to Coda Works, this past week I attended the Coda Works Summit in Cincinnati, along with our public art director and our arts grants coordinator. Coda Works serves as a platform where public art and technology intersect internationally. Industry professionals not only share the story of their work, but they network with other jurisdictions, administrators, as well as industry and art professionals to bring these works to many different places in varying iterations. I attended this summit last year in San Jose and knew immediately that Washington, D.C. would be an ideal place to host the summit and to share with the public art practitioners around the world artistic spirit of the district. I'm happy to announce that Coda Works 2025 will be held here in Washington, D.C. during the last full week of September, so that the public art professionals will have an opportunity to witness art all night, learn more of how we are premiering Art Week DC, provide an opportunity for them to take advantage of possible opportunities to network or to do work here as well. FY25 funds. The FY25 spending plans have been completed for the first time. Each department has been fully involved with the creation of their budget, along with highlighting departmental allocation needs. Understanding our funding percentages have changed between grants and administration, all departments have presented with their possible options for the usage of the funds, and we'll repeat the formulation exercise this week for the upcoming FY26 budget. I, myself, and Brandon Saunders attended the day-long FY26 budget launch meeting. One difference between how our budgets have traditionally been formulated is the update to how we request monies from the fund balance. As discussed in the executive committee meeting, we must present a plan to request money from our FY26 fund balance, similarly to how we would request usage of our special purpose revenue. Traditionally, we have utilized our fund balance to help maintain funding amounts or provide enhancements when possible. The anticipation is that CAH will maintain that same posture. As far as our grants are concerned, this month, CAH is adopting an all hands-on-deck approach. I want to thank the staff for coming into the office every day and supporting the grants and public arts team in striving to get our grant awards out sooner to the public. Our resource allocation team has worked with both our grants and public art departments to examine new workflow protocols that we feel will be beneficial to our awardees. To help us really meet the moment, we will need the public's help. We encourage, and before I say this, I was talking to our grant managers, we have a number of people who have not signed their grant agreements, and this slows down the process extremely. So if you could, please sign your grant agreement so we can start the project, start the award process for you, as well as, I just reached out to our IT person to ensure that we all have Adobe Acrobat. We may be sending out some people for some Adobe Sign to help you with your contracts and W9s, making sure that you're using the most recent version of the W9. So we need you to get your clean hands, business licenses, insurance, DISH password, direct deposit information, address and email addresses are all current. Having these crucial elements up to date help us ensure a more efficient process to everyone, and it keeps the attention on our grant managers focused on processing paper. And we have heard significant feedback from the public around the FY25 grant awardees, and I must say thank you. This year, I was reminded that CAH's focus and insistence on being fair and equitable brings more people to the fold and creates opportunities to further the work of those who have been in our ranks in years past. One of the grant areas that received mixed responses, and I think it receives this somewhat every year, was the General Operating Support Grant, which is GOS. This grant program is ever-growing with organizations that have previously received project-based grants matriculating into it each year. When, we were fortunate in the four years from FY21 to FY24 to fund all eligible applicants to this program. This past year, FY24, we funded a total of 171 applicants in alignment with the funding tiers created around organizational budget size. In the current year, FY25, we funded 167 applicants using the same approach. Additionally, seven applicants were impacted by the Budget Support Act legislation that limited the amount of those organizations could receive. Due to the increase in the eligible applications this year, i.e. 205, we had to reinstate cutoffs, something that was always done in years before the pandemic. We determined that the lowest scoring, 15% of applicants to each of the 10 GOS cohorts, would fall below the cutoff line. Now, traditionally, applicants that fall below this line are not funded. This number amounted to 31 applicants spread across all 10 GOS cohorts. There was enough money available, though, to fund each of those organizations at 40% of what they had received in FY24. As a reminder, employees and commissioners have zero sway into what programs, organizations, or individuals are awarded. The panel process is an opportunity for employees and commissioners to listen to what the panelists are saying, the questions they are asking, to see how grantees are presenting their work, and to ensure that when we roll out the next round of grant opportunities, they are as reflective of the community as possible. If you have any questions on how to become a stronger applicant or feedback on your previous application, please roll out, please reach out to your grant manager so we may provide the feedback necessary. Please note, this is a competitive process, so some may not receive a grant or may receive an award but at a lower or higher amount than in years past. If not awarded, know that we encourage you to apply again in the future grant cycle. Construction, just moving on, construction is nearly complete in the former OCTFME space that our grant managers will occupy near the front of the building. We are now looking to move the grants team at the end of the month, which I'm excited about. As far as our website is concerned, the new CAH website is up and running. It went live last Wednesday morning, the goal was to create a design that is more user-friendly and easier to locate information. Portrait Out Loud, we have begun the preliminary planning of Portrait Out Loud set for Saturday, March 15th, 2025. Anyone interested in participating should contact the agency's arts learning coordinator, Andrea Brown, at andrea.brown3@dc.gov, and her information is also available on our website. The music census, the music census will be released October 28th. Please note, the commissioners will receive the information beforehand. We obtained the final report from Sound Music City's last Tuesday. That included all of our community feedback, I want to thank the community for the feedback that was incorporated, and gave room for insights, an insights document that may help put into context much of the data and numbers that will be reported out on. We will continue to update the public on the new timeline for the theater census. We are trying to implement lessons learned from the music census so that we are as successful as possible. Strategic plan, the team is working to present the updated RFP under the new fiscal year to OCP and with the $120,000 threshold for procurement. Once the RFP is submitted, we will await the updated timeline from OCP and continue to work with them to secure a company to complete the strategic plan, and we are in contact with the NEA regarding this process. Thank you, and I'm available if you have any questions or comments.
Any questions from the commissioners? There are two points I want to punctuate, the first is the balancing act that we have to go through when we have increased need and finite resources is a challenge. And I know that there are winners and there are losers in the minds of some of our grantees, but we try our best to do the best we can with the money we're given, and our commitment to equity is real. I know from some of our public comments today, there's a concern that perhaps that equity is not being exhibited, so we really want to meet with those who are concerned so that you understand our process, and if we need to make a fix to it, we'll make a fix to it, but know that this is a balancing act, and we have to deal with that reality. The second part I make, which is more positive, is I'm really excited over the new office space, I got a chance to look at it today, it is right in the front of the building once you come through the turnstiles, and so it wants to be an open environment for grantees to come, for prospective grantees to come as well to understand how we work, you don't have to walk down the hall and around the corners, right there, right in the front, so this is in the spirit of us being open and inclusive and wanting to hear from our grantees and our constituents, so I would invite everyone, once the space is open, to come, not only look at our beautiful gallery space, but to come into the office and sit and talk with us as well, keeping us honest of the work we're trying to do. If no other questions, I'll go to the committee reports, is Kimber here? If not, perhaps Brandon Saunders, is Brandon here and prepared to, so Brandon, could you give the finance group?
Yes, sir. Good evening, happy Monday, everyone, my name is Brandon Saunders. I am the resource allocation officer here at CAH Commission on Arts of Humanities. I'm an African-American male, wearing a gray sweater with black stripes, and I am particularly happy to join you this evening, because it may seem like another monthly committee report or another monthly meeting. because it may seem like another monthly committee report or another monthly meeting, but for us, it is the beginning of a new fiscal year. This brings a lot of different opportunities, a lot of different innovations, and a lot of different things that, you know, we're excited to just share to help us innovate and, you know, increase our efficiency all across the board here at the agency. So let me start by, yes, going to the next slide. And here is just our, essentially, what you'll find with this first month of October, are a lot of our financial records. We present at the beginning part of each meeting, three reports that essentially go over how we think about our budget here at CAH. This first slide is essentially a macro-level breakdown between the administrative side and the grant side, in which it represents the policy 82, 18% split in our budgets overall. So this is the most base-level macro way that we look at our budget overall. You will find that there is a lot of, of course, available funding, and that's because a lot of grants and a lot of contracts, given that the fiscal year just started, are still, you know, in the beginning processes of being awarded or awarded in terms of the contracts. And of course, we're beginning the fiscal sufficiency memos for certification of the grant funds. And I will imagine that by this time next month, that we will have a lot more of action, and of course, there will be, can we move to the next slide? Thank you so much. There'll be a lot more, of course, details around our, essentially, codes and how we look at these budgets and how more transparent with the grant programs. This particular slide, however, goes into more detail than even previous fiscal year in terms of how we look at our budget overall. This is all of our non-grantees funding, so it includes a lot of different categories that you'll see there. As you'll see, of course, very much available, a lot of available funding. We just started the fiscal year, and as Director Myers just mentioned earlier, we are in the, we just really finalized spending plans and distributed into the various departments for, yes, the beginning parts of now, spending down for the fiscal year. And can we move to the last slide? Thank you. And then, so this is where we show the different breakdowns between all of our grant programs, and this report will look actually a little bit different next month when we'll have essentially some more transparency in terms of how each of the grant programs are spending down and getting throughout the year. This was a previous request that was, honestly, we could only do until there was a new change in the fiscal year, and we're happy to just provide that transparency. It will definitely make these numbers a lot more straightforward for everyone. So I'm excited to share that. But we are actually in the process of, excuse me, I'm still coming down with a little bit of something, something. I apologize, but I'm still happy to be here. But yes, so we are still in the process of having, getting approval from our OCFO in order to institute these project codes, so we'll be happy to share those next month. And then, just to add some extra notes that exceed the reports, currently, we're still in the process of, just at the very end of closing out the fiscal year '24 on behalf of the agency. Right now, we're also, as I mentioned in the beginning parts of fiscal year '25, so we're just beginning to just spin down all across the board. And then, we're in the beginning parts, as Director Myers also mentioned earlier, planning for FY26 as well. This comes with a lot of, really a lot of back and forth with our OCFO and a lot of changing dynamic figures. So this is the time, you know, essentially for us to make sure that the next 12 to 24 months are exactly where we want to as well, and we're very excited for that. And that's all that I have. I'm very excited to answer any questions, of course, that you may have, excuse me, just in terms of the process or in terms of just what these numbers just may mean in general. Thank you.
Thanks. Any questions from the commissioners? I will make a comment and a commitment. The comment is, there's no way in the world I could see anything on your slides that you showed, and I'm sure nobody else could as well, so. And that's not your fault, that's just the report and the details in the report. The commitment is, we're going to find a way to be able to communicate where we are financially in a way that could be read and understood. You can speak the words, which is good, but the numbers, I don't know, I don't know exactly how we'll do it, but I think we need to find a way that people can see what we're talking about and not just hear what we're talking about. So that is our challenge, we'll figure that out. The good news is, nothing has happened yet. So when the action starts in the coming months, we'll make sure that we can communicate the finances in a way that's consumable. Thank you, Brandon.
Yes.
Grants Committee, Gretchen.
Hello, everyone. I'm Gretchen Wharton, I'm Vice Chair of the Commission and Chair of the Grants Committee. Black female, platinum hair, black glasses, and a pink top on today. Thank you so much for joining us. The grants team is diligently reviewing and processing grant agreements for FY25. I know it sounds like we're still in '24 and '25, but believe it or not, we're just about through all of the '25 grants because our fiscal year ends the end of September. As of today, we've awarded 1,085 grants excluding our Capital Projects Grant. In just the first two weeks of processing, we've routed nearly 300 grant agreements for approval. Please note that the deadline for submitting grant agreements and supporting documents is Friday, October 25th. If you have been notified that you are an awardee and the grant manager is missing certain items, please review that and please try to do it tonight, tomorrow, do it right away, because we need those agreements and the supporting documents no later than Friday, October 25th, to process your grant. The Capital Projects Grant that I just mentioned, we've received 94 applications aligning with the 98 that we received last year. The panel review process will begin on Tuesday, October the 22nd and conclude on November 7th with seven panels. The commission will vote on funding the recommendations at the November Commission's meeting. Since October 8th, the grants team has conducted two workshops on grant documents and the district integrated financial system that are known as DIFs. We've heard so many people, so many grantees, so many applicants complain, rightfully so, about the difficulties of using the DIF system. It was brand new, there were a lot of issues, as there always are with new technology and upgraded systems. So there's workshops scheduled for the Fine Reports Workshop Tuesday, October the 22nd at 12 noon, and the DIFs Workshop every Wednesday at 12 noon. Please take note of those dates. The DIF System Workshop every Wednesday at 12 noon, and the Fine Reports Workshop, October 22nd at 12 noon. Okay, our grant officer hours are every Monday at 10 a.m. And I'd like to really take my hat off to the grants managers, aside from the fact that they put in so much work processing these grants and getting them into the system and getting you paid for them. They have these office hours for you to come in at your leisure during these particular times and get more help. Please do it. Thank you.
And grants? Any questions from the commissioners? I will add a little commercial here. Our goal, we have three goals in the grants process. First, all eligible applicants across the city are fully aware of what funds are available and understand the process to be awarded a grant, first. Second, the grants are equitably distributed across the wards, across the city, with the right sort of criteria, the panel is operating in the right sort of way, et cetera. And then, third, once the awards have been made, we get you your money as quickly as possible. Those are very clear three goals, and we are making progress. There are some places where there may be some challenges, we're making progress. But no, our goal is to achieve all three of those. People know about the grants. People understand that the process to distribute the grants was equitable and that people get their money as quickly as possible. And that's the dedication that the Grant Committee has and this commission has as well. I just wanted to punctuate that, Gretchen.
Also, on top of that, just please go onto the website. All of the grants are listed, the dates are listed, the grant managers are listed, and you have open access to all of that, so please use it.
Great, thanks. And not, once again, not to add too much of a commercial, but if you look at the increase in our applicants over the last three or so years, it suggests somehow people are aware of grants that weren't aware before. If you look at what's been granted, many more new applicants are getting funding from us. And if you look at how we're getting the money to them, though it's longer than anybody likes, it's getting shorter every year. So we are committed to getting to 100% performance across those three. With that, I'll go to Carla in Public Arts.
Good afternoon, good evening, everyone. The Public Arts Committee met on October the 10th, and we had no major voting, we just had project updates. And so I'm going to turn it over to Corinne to provide those updates to the meeting.
Great, thanks Commissioner Sims. My name is Corinne Miller, I'm the Public Arts Manager. I'm a white woman with white glasses and a teal shirt on. So as Commissioner Sims met, the Public Art Committee met on Thursday, October 10th. There's a report in your packets and online as well. So I'll just outline the staff report and items discussed during that meeting. So first of all, we had a great opening for DC Art Now on Friday, September 27th. It features finalists from the Art Bank Grant Program and was part of the Commission's Art All Night presentation. It was a really great and lively event. I also want to mention that the Art Bank Program Grant, our awards were announced for that program on Tuesday, October 8th. 68 artists were awarded grants for a total acquisition of 77 artworks. We also announced the Art Exhibition Curatorial Grants. So three applicants were offered grants to curate exhibitions in our gallery around three distinct themes. One is social justice, another is the art of veterans, and another is world pride. Next, if you want to scroll down a little bit there, is Color of the Curb, the school safety program. So all four FY24 projects were complete in wards 1, 4, 5, and 8, all near schools to promote safety. And there are plans that continue for this program in FY25 as well. So I also want to mention a few things around collections management. Our Art Bank program continues to be in high demand. We have a number of requests for new agency loans, new artworks, additions to existing loans, de-installs, relocations. So right now, we have something like 26 different open requests. So it proves to be an exciting and high-demand program. If you want to keep scrolling down. Next, we have the Commemorative Works Technical Assistance Program. That was a project that we did in coordination with the Office of Planning to work on designs for four potential public art projects. So that project was presented during Office of Planning, presented it during Art All Night. Next, we have the Cooper Gordon Sculpture Project. So that artwork was installed over the summer, but since the park is still under construction, we won't have a ribbon cutting and dedication for that project until later this year. Work continues on the Marion Barry Junior Legacy Public Art Project. The artist's team continues to work on fabrication, and there are plans to hold a dedication and event to follow the installation of that project. I also want to call out our Public Art Building Communities Grant Cycle. So on October 8th, we announced three grantees for that project as well. It's the Logan Circle Community Association, the Nicholson Project, and the Southwest Business Improvement District were awarded grants for that. And then, our team continues to work on expanding and improving ways that we can work with other agencies and partners and use tools to best facilitate that. So that is everything that I have, unless Commissioner Sims has anything to add or if anyone has questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you, Corinne.
Any questions? Thank you, just continued thanks and accolades to both the Public Art Team and the Grants Team as well. Full team. Full teams, both the teams, thank you. Julianne, Governance?
All right, good evening. I am Julianne Brienza, I am the Ward Six Commissioner. I am a white woman of Italian and Irish heritage. However, Ancestry.com just did a big update, which if you use Ancestry, you may know that. And I have just been notified I am 30% Spanish. So I got to figure that out in the coming, in the coming year. I am here to tie up loose ends from the end of the fiscal year and the beginning of the new fiscal year. Super excited that Denise Tolliver is in the room taking minutes. So I sent her a template earlier today, and she is currently taking minutes so that we are able to achieve our goal of taking minutes and putting them on the website for the public for the entirety of the new fiscal year. We have two resolutions that we are going to vote on today. One is dealing with the Art Week DC, and the other one is the extension of the extension of our strategic plan. So let's start off with the, well, I'll see what appears. This is the extension of the extension. All right, as our Executive, Erin Myers, detailed in his report.
This is Art Week DC, Julianne.
Oh, I'm so sorry, I can read, I am here. So sorry, Art Week DC, to extend the committee for another year to gather citywide stakeholder base to convene on a regular basis to plan out the mission, scope, and parameters, and define the goals of a week-long art fair here in the nation's capital. This is going to be extended through October of 2025. This is a special committee consisting of a committee chair, five voting commissioners, and up to 10 voting members. I do not believe at this time this committee has any members, so can't wait. And that is all for the Art Week DC. I don't need to read the entire thing, just the dates are updated. Then moving, we'll vote on both of them at the same time, so we're going to move to the strategic plan resolution, if you want to show that on the screen. As Erin Myers, our Executive, detailed in his report, the agency continues on its 15-month journey to obtain a contract to hire a consultant to develop and create our strategic plan. The resolution is just updated to go through, that we have the contract in place by March 1st, 2025. So just to recap, this was a resolution that was first put forth in July of 2023. It was then extended in December of 2024, and now we're going to extend it again until March. So those are our two resolutions before us today. And what I'd like to do at this point, unless there are questions from any of the commissioners, is to put forth these two resolutions to be accepted as presented. And I'm going to, I'm going to pass it off to our Chairman, Van Lee, to initiate that vote on these two resolutions.
So first, any other questions, comments about the, from the commissioners? If not, I will call the roll. If you're in favor of approving those two resolutions, say aye. If not, no. Cora?
Aye.
Julianne?
Aye.
Demetrius?
Aye.
Cicely?
Aye.
Janice?
Aye.
Chase? Kimber?
Aye.
Hector?
Aye.
Gretchen?
Aye.
Thank you. They both passed, thank you, thank you, Julianne. And thanks again to Julianne and the Governance Committee for keeping us honest, doing it by the book, crossing the Ts and dotting Is, we really appreciate it. So thank you, thank you. Anything else from Governance, Julianne?
I will say that we are about to start our new fiscal year, and it would be really meaningful with the loss of some commissioners coming up in the future. If anyone can join the Governance Committee, I do not feel comfortable doing the committee as the sole member of the committee. So if any commissioner out there is like, oh my God, I'd love to participate, maybe, you know, shoot me an email. If not, I will reach out and figure out how the committee can continue with no members.
I will, I will find a way to get commissioners to volunteer.
Just, we meet quarterly, it's not like the Grants Committee or other committees, it's not that bad.
In our fairness, Julianne has done all the work already, so it's just a maintenance role now as opposed to having to redo or recreate anything. So don't worry, you will have the number of volunteers you need. Arts Education, Hector?
Yes, indeed, here I am, a Latino man with white hair, and I would like to say that our committee met on October 8th. And attendance were Commissioner Sims and our Commission Chair. um and our commission chair, um Reggie Van Lee and myself. I also would like to have an invitation to have other commissioners join our committee uh simply because obviously this work needs to be done and work with uh other committee members. Um, there were no decisions made at this particular committee meeting, so the ones that I do want to report, not as decisions, but as moving forward with uh items, uh twenty twenty-four, the N A S A A Professional Development Institute. Uh, each year, state arts agencies, education managers convene to take part in the leadership and professional development, grant funding, resources, equitable access to arts education, and community partnerships are a few of the many topics discussed amongst peers representing fifty states and jurisdiction jurisdictions. This year, T D I will take a place in San Juan, Puerto Rico. I'm looking forward to being there because my homeland, if I can, if I'm invited, uh from October twenty-first to the twenty-sixth. Uh, Poetry Out Loud is another aspect that is very important of our education commitment. Um, is a national poetry resitation contest and invites local high school students to participate in nationally recognized pre uh uh to twentieth century uh poetry resitation contest, contest. Last year, the district, district's own Benjamin Bannaker sophomore, Nyla Dinkins, came in third in the nation, which was a real great accomplishment. Uh, the call for teaching artists skilled in theater, poetry, resitation, performance, and/or in memorization to coach district students who are interested in participating in the spring twenty twenty-five Poetry Out Loud uh competition is now live and looking for applications. Poetry Out Loud Teaching Artists Interest Meeting will be held on October twenty-eighth. So please, those of you listening, uh, take note. Please contact Arts Learning Coordinator Andrea Brown for additional information at andrea brown, Andrea, I'm sorry, andrea, andrea dot brown three at D C dot gov. Summer internships is another program that we have, that we work with. Um, there will be a call for twenty twenty-five summer interns that will go live on Monday, January sixth. I know it's a little bit ahead, but it's good to plan ahead. Uh, Commission Arts and Humanities seeks college-level interns with an interest in working in the Grants Arts Education and Events Department. Internships are six-to-eight-week immersive experience, great for college students with an interest in a career in the arts. This is really wonderful where we get the young people who actually work in the arts and actually are very inspired by our work. Uh, that concludes my report, and I encourage people who are interested, or if you know anyone that'll be interested in these summer internships, to please advise them and let them know. Thank you.
Questions? Thank you, thank you. Uh, normally, we would have two special committee updates, uh the Foundation Update and the Art Week twenty twenty-five update. Uh, as you know, last month, the Foundation Committee finished its work uh and presented its report and um wrapped their uh deliverable in a nice bow, and their time ran out anyway, uh so that work is done. Uh, I will report on the Art Week twenty twenty-five, and thank you for approving the extension of this committee for another year, and I promise it will be populated appropriately. Um, three points I want to make first, we mentioned this before, but we now have a consultant on board to help us develop the plan for Art Week twenty, Art Week D C. And uh that's Michael Kaiser, who many of you know was the president of the Kennedy Center for fourteen years, is now with the DeVos Institute, and they do these sort of strategic plans for not-for-profit organizations. Um, with great success, they have a good track record, so we're excited about having him on board, and that work will finish by the end of January, so it's a short fuse to get us going on that. Second, we continue to build support for our, from our various constituents. Uh, we had a dinner last week with several D C agencies, event planners, collectors, and others, and had continued support from them. Some of them, I suspect, will be coming on the committee as I begin to populate the committee, but know that the support continues. And then thirdly, um, the stake, there will be another stakeholder meeting that we're planning in the December timeframe, and our goal is to get that group of stakeholders, all of those who have come to our sessions before, several hundred people will be invited to that. Um, we've gotten uh use of the Gallup Building's Great Hall, and some of you may recall at the end of my first year as chair at the September meeting we held at Gallup, so we'll be in that space, which can accommodate a large number of people. And again, our goal is to co-create with that group what Art Week D C will become. There will be a progress review with Michael Kaiser at that point. He will have done enough work not to have an answer or conclusion, but to have thoughts to share with us so we can have that interaction with that insight as well. And then lastly, I just want to say we continue to be excited over what Art Week D C can do for the artists in the city, can do for the city from a commerce standpoint. We continue to get great support from various people. It's a lot of work. It's hard work to do, but it's worthwhile, and we're looking forward to it. Um, I only have one agenda item, unfinished business, and this is to approve the F Y twenty-five commission meeting dates. You can see them on the screen. Uh, November eighteenth, December sixteenth, and next year, January twenty-third, February twentieth, March seventeenth, March twenty-third, I'm sorry, April twenty-first, May nineteenth, June sixteenth, July twenty-first, August eighteenth, and September twenty-ninth. Those are the dates proposed for our meetings next year. Um, if there are no comments or questions, I will go through the roll and see if people in agreement with um this meeting date, and of course, the meetings can shift if something happens, but these are the dates we like to start with. So I'm going to go down the roster again. Cora? Julianne?
Yes.
Demetrius?
Yes.
Cicely?
Yes.
Janice?
Yes.
Chase? Kimber? Kimber? Carla?
Yes, yes.
Is that a yes from Kimber?
No, that was Carla twice.
Hector?
Yes.
Gretchen?
Yes.
Great. Uh, there being no further business, the meeting of the commission will be, the next meeting, rather, the commission will be held Monday, November eighteenth, twenty twenty-four, as you just voted on, at five thirty P M. The time is now six thirty P M, and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.